Can we say we pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Are there any changes to the agenda? Okay, here none. Shall we look at the live district calendar?
All right, so as we've been doing as of late, here is the calendar which can be found on our website. These are all updated by the individual schools and then in the district I update those. You'll you will see that there's one very large item that's just a food drive. So it's just representing all the days that people can donate. So I know it looks like a big chunk of the calendar, but obviously it's just a singular item. You know, obviously, we're going into Thanksgiving holiday, so we have the only the two days this week and then we have a couple of days off. We have the winter sports meeting on the twenty ninth. That's for all folks that are playing a winter sport at the high school. And then we are already heading into December. It looks like one of the events that's not on here that should be on here is on, I believe, December first. JGS is gonna have a family fun night. That's six o'clock, Daisy. Do you remember off the top of your head?
I don't, but I just got that information.
And there are a couple other events that I'm aware of that need to be updated. So I will make sure that I reach out to the schools to make sure that they're up on these calendars. Because obviously this is a very important resource for us to maintain all district events on, so. I'll go through the the various newsletters and if they can't get them on there, I'll try to get them on there before we head off to the holiday, just so the people are aware.
JGS Family Fun Night is Thursday, December first from six to seven thirty. There's a book fair, holiday karaoke, cookie decorating, story time with a special guest. Creative projects, you can make a sleigh, a bell and a mini leather book.
And then we also have on the eighth, what appears to be the winter concert. Waiting for some more details on that, but you have at least the date and the time. And middle school semi-formal dance on the ninth. And that's again of December, so. And then, you know, obviously you guys know from the school board perspective, we're gonna start meeting a little bit more regularly. To discuss budget. And then on the fourteenth of December, we have the early release day. That's for our elementary schools for planning and other staff resources.
Okay, so I guess the reason we put the calendar on the beginning of our agendas, so we all have a chance to just gotta be aware what things are upcoming and then we either would like to be involved in or think we should be involved in, so. Again, Nick, thank you for bringing this forward. Are there any questions or any comments anybody has about upcoming events? Okay. All right, great. Well, thank you, Ben. And let's move on to public comments.
All right, so it's me again. It was Handy Communications Coordinator, School Board Secretary. We are officially in the first section of our public comments for this school board meeting. We have one at the beginning, one at the end. If you would like to make a public comment, just make sure that you are familiar with our policy, you know. Make sure you read that over. If you're gonna make a, excuse me, if you're gonna make a public comment, use your first name, last name and town of residence. We can record that in the minutes. If you are physically present and you would like to make a public comment, you may do so by just kind of obviously raising your hand. We can flag you down. We do require that you need a microphone. It's not gonna amplify in the room, but you need that just so that people on the live feed can hear you. Those of you that are attending via Zoom have the ability to raise your hand with the hand raise feature that will alert me that you would like to speak and then I can select you and give you that authority to be able to speak. So I guess just because it gives us some time to develop a lot, you know, remote audience. If anybody in person wants to speak, that would be the time. Would you like to?
So again, quick search the microphone for you.
Testing.
Hello, I'm Corey Manley Jeffrey. I am here more so to kind of just spread awareness about our athletic program specifically at the middle school level. So just to give you some background. I have a son that attends Dublin Christian Academy. He does not get dismissed until three o'clock. He tried out for the basketball team. Made one team, but they practice at two fifteen, so I cannot pull him. I can't have a missing academics for a sport. So that isn't so much the issue. It's the resources in the area. I cannot find a program for him to play basketball. And I think as a result, I think what's happened is again, it's more so making you all aware that I think this is a problem and I think it's gonna be a bigger problem. That when it's my understanding that there are approximately twenty kids give or take on each middle school team, boys and girls. So you have forty kids, which is great that that many kids are trying out for sports. I think that's wonderful. But you can't, you can't have, you can't run. Kids aren't gonna get anything out of the program if they're sitting on the bench and they're not able to participate. So I think with those large numbers of approximately twenty kids on a team, it's not doing anybody any favors. And I understand the not wanting to single kids out or have to cut people. But at the same time, there should be a number, there should be a threshold as to when the school decides that, you know what, we can't take more than thirty kids. Because what's happened as I'm calling around to try to find a a program for him to play in. Nobody's running a program because nobody signed up because they wanted to play the school sports. So now I know a lot of parents, I'm not the only one. Unfortunately, I'm the only one that was able to make it tonight. So I'm representing all of them. But now the deadlines are passed. So now we have a situation where my son wants to play basketball and he can't. So it's frustrating because I don't know what the fix is, but to me it seems the most logical thing. It starts with having a sports department or whether it's, I don't know where it comes from. I'm sure you're involved, administration as a whole is involved, the athletic director is involved. But I think something needs to be done. We've contacted the NHIAA and there's really not much. There's not much. They they don't get involved necessarily until the high school level. The NHIAA says that basically the public school should make sports available and open to anyone within the district. Now my son is in sixth grade and he's a middle schooler, but I can tell you that the upper school kids, the ninth, the tenth, the eleventh, the twelfth graders in his particular private school, they also don't get out until three o'clock. We may have the issue with Lionheart, the charter school in Peterborough. They are gonna be adding a sixth grade next year. It's my understanding that every year they're in operation. They get to add a grade level. So I just think if we don't, if we're not aware of this now, it's gonna be compounded and these kids are missing out. I don't think it's fair that I have to tell my son that I'm sorry bud, you can't play basketball because I cannot find, I did find a program. Out of New Ipswich, not ideal, but he wants to play competitively. But their practice doesn't get out until nine thirty and he's in sixth grade. That to me is just doesn't make sense, but if that's what I have to do to be able to get him to play basketball, then I'm considering it. So again, I guess I would ask that you look at that. Again, I don't like to have to turn a kid away and say, I'm sorry bud, you didn't make the team. But that's what those rec programs are for. They're there for those and some kids that do the sports through the school still do rec. But again, what's happening and whether the communication, you know, between the rec departments, maybe they need to do a better job at communicating to the school. You know, hey, we have these programs, so present these to the kids when or the parents when their child doesn't make it, you know, remind them that this program is available. So again, I'm just speaking, I know a lot of parents, you know, I'm not gonna have my son play on a team where there's twenty kids because he's gonna sit on the bench and he's not gonna play and he's not, that's what he's there to do is to play, to learn, to get the skills. And I know there's a lot of parents that are in the same, they feel the same way that I do and therefore their kids are not playing for JRMS. And so again, I think this is gonna get compounded as time goes by if it doesn't get addressed now. And again, I think some people I've talked to think the issue is with a private school, my son specifically in the private school, that's not what I'm getting at. I'm just saying that I'm okay. I'm disappointed that he can't play because of the time of the practices. But that's not it. It's the resources aren't there to have him play somewhere else, especially competitively. So that's kind of more so a comment, but and again, I wish some parents were here with me because I know that they share the same concerns that I have. So that's really, it's just that. And again, I'm not speaking just for, you know, it might happen in other sports too. I think we had problems with softball team last year. There was a team B created and it just, it it I think it just makes, there's just all these little gaps to fill in. And I think a lot of the, you know, I'm already seeing it that the secondary teams that are created or made, they're already having practices canceled or scrapped. That's not fair to the kids and you know, by creating additional teams, you're talking about creating additional costs. You're talking about more uniforms. You're talking about more coaching staff that you have to hire. And then the other thing, a snowball effect of creating additional teams is that those additional teams are also using up gym time. So this could be the situation I'm having with this program. I want him to get into a new whip switch is nine, you know, his eight to nine thirty slot, that's all they have available. So that's when I have to take it. So I know that gym time is at a premium. But again, creating those additional teams is also utilizing gym time that I feel could be better suited if we just had one team, you know, or maybe come up with another team, but do, we don't even have it's from what I understand, we don't even have a B coach for basketball for at least the boys. So we're running a program. We have no coach. I think I think Ms. Lindstedt might be filling in from what I understand, but it just seems a little backwards to me.
Well, Corey, thank you very much. I mean, you you raised a whole series of questions. Does anybody, any of the board members have questions about what what Corey's presenting to us?
I just wanna make sure I understand.
Sure.
You you said that the recreation departments didn't create a basketball team because of the school or?
I believe what happened, and I know on one of the the New Ipswich rec or basically it was administered through Ringe, but they didn't have enough kids sign up, so it's being passed over to the next town, which is New Ipswich, which thankfully has space for him, but they did have these programs. They were, they've been, and again, I don't necessarily think that they were marketed well. I don't think they were advertised well, so that's not certainly on on you or this district, but from the way I understand it, they had some kids that were signed up but then decided to try out for the middle school team. So they rescinded their application. I think the Ringe rec was so desperate that they even put on their flyers. You know, deadlines or this date and actually they're not until I think next week. But if you make the school team will refund your money because they were so hard up for applicants, they were so hard up for kids to sign up. So it's my understanding, they did have a few boys that had signed up. But again, I think because of the way tryouts here run and the enrollment timeframe for the rec departments. The debt, some of the deadlines have already passed and now these these families are looking saying, hey, my kid's on a team with twenty kids and I can't make, I can't get him to practice. So he can't do that. Now we're finding when we're reaching out to these rec departments, they're saying we we don't that we didn't, we couldn't do that program because there weren't enough kids interested. So you're welcome.
Nick, where do we stand with the other people wanting to provide input? And and also while we're at it, is Paul O'Malley connected in with us?
Oh yeah, Paul's here.
Okay.
I am.
Hi, Paul.
How's it going?
Good, good. Okay, so we should give an opportunity to the other person who's raised their hand.
Yeah, of course. So Megan, I'm gonna give you the ability to talk right now.
Hi, my name is Megan Burleson. I'm in Ringe. I was calling, I just wanted to, car raising my hand in to just kind of, on the flip side of that, I do want to say that I think it's really great that they are offering so many opportunities to the kids. I do agree that the timing could be better for working parents as it is hard to get there by three thirty to pick up my kid who is on the B team as well. But I I do think that creating a space for kids who maybe can't pay the cost of a rec league or who can't have the transportation to those things is a huge a huge burden off of parents and you know, maybe older siblings that are having to make those drop offs and things like that. And and I do think that obviously there's always gonna be a hard time finding coaches as there's a hard time finding a lot of people these days as far as education goes. But I just wanted to say kind of on the flip side that as a parent as well of a a B team member at this time, I was told about the rec department and I also am just really happy with just the opportunities that the school is providing. That's really all I had to say.
Okay, thank you, Meg. Okay. So you've given us a lot of information, Corey. Thank you. Thank you also, Megan. And just try and reflect on it and see what we can come up with. Okay, so.
I have a quick question. If a Jeffrey or Ringe kid goes to Lionheart, they would play and they want to play on a sport, would they play on a hard teams because it were their home district?
Yeah, I can't understand it. They have to play in their home residing district.
And there's gonna be a lot of questions like that, not only related to sports, but student services and there's gonna be a lot of things for us to dig into as these.
Yeah, certainly, certainly with a charter school, not just Lionheart, multiple charter schools in the region, we have a lot of work as it relates to special education with 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 those with those particular schools.
Lionheart gets out later than my son's school.
Yeah. All right, so then we don't have our student representative with us tonight.
Yeah, she sends her apologies for not being able to make it. She's actually at a late basketball practice, so.
See these basketball schedules there. They influence a lot, right? A lot of things. Ruben, can you give us your superintendent's report?
Yeah, a lot has happened since the last time we met. And so I'm just gonna kind of, I'm gonna sound like the live district calendar, but I guess not so live any longer, but it was a lot happened. So Monday, November the fourteenth, the week after we met, we had our first, I would say limited or small cohort meeting with the elementary education committee, just to look at a variety of things of what we're looking for down the road in years to come. Some individuals, you know, had the opportunity to talk about what they wanted to see as outcomes within elementary school. Other people just went straight to the how. They'd like to see it happen. So it was very, it was a very focused excited group and I think it's gonna be good. So I still have to get the minutes out to that group and to find out that next time we're gonna meet, we'll meet, look to meet in December. Couple times in June, we're in a couple times in February and then come to the board with some recommendations. Similarly, on Wednesday evening. And I'll go back to Tuesday and Wednesday earlier as well, but in the same, we had another kind of committee meeting that's of a similar nature kind of concept, like five meetings is what we're what we're really looking for. It's a short term committee meeting on athletics to talk about basically the athletic spaces, gyms, fields, anything of that nature and to start talking about how we can improve what we have. Better utilize what we have and, you know, look for a lot of different ways of making sure that our learners have the have safe and appropriate locations to play. For instance, as an example, there was a fair amount of conversation about the lower field. So you have the field that's with the track. Overall, people are very pleased with that field. Could have been a little greener, I think, this year, but we had quite a drought during that timeframe during the summertime and early fall. But overall, that's well received, but feels like the Range Memorial school field, which is fairly good size, but really not well maintained along with the fields, the lower fields, which are very much underwater a lot. They're, they have hill, they're kind of hilly and so not really the safest to actually play actual games on. It's certainly not not on a regular basis. You know, what can we do differently? What can the community do differently? So I think we're gonna be starting, that group is very excited. They were not necessarily entrusted in talking about philosophy and envisioning and all that. They kind, I think they already came in kind of knowing what their vision was and would like to get to work. And so we're gonna get to work next time and put pen to paper and start to sketch out some ideas, maybe a multi-step plan of how to go about helping improve things from the easiest thing to improve, maybe to the the areas that are gonna take a little bit longer, perhaps, and a little more community support, whatever that support may look like. We talked a lot about really not putting more burden on the taxpayers. So what can we do differently? Last Tuesday, we had our fourth out of four part series on proficiency grading. It was a college admissions panel, so I was able to see a little bit of it, but not the entirety. Looking forward to reviewing that. I know that that along with the other three in the series are on our YouTube channel. Similarly, on our YouTube channel that was just posted just a little while ago was the state of the district that we had on Thursday, November seventeen. So an overview of all the things that are going on in the district, a little bit of history, a little bit of what's going on right now with the multi-year plan as well as some very, you know, specifics that are happening at various schools. So whether it be athletics or academics. Anything you can really that was talked about. And then there was, that was about my time of, you know, talking straight into the camera was about twenty twenty-two minutes. And then there were a series, there was about a half an hour of questioning answers afterwards. We had the principals of all three schools answer questions. John Leclerc facilities, obviously you know, there's a lot going on in facilities right now, especially with our HVAC projects, kind of updating where we are with that, where we are with our our hiring process with custodians and so forth. So there's a lot of information, I think. Definitely well worth the hour. I don't think it's more than an hour to sit down and kind of go through and maybe fast forward into some areas that you're more interested in, but I think it's a good piece of information out there. And we'll send that link out. Probably it'd be probably next week, probably not tomorrow. We'll let we'll let people have Thanksgiving, so. To see, we we continue to have negotiations that's happening on every other Wednesday with one of our collective bargaining units. And then today, just a little bit before prior to our non-public session in this session, we had our first inquiry team meeting of the year. So the members from the Ringe Chaffrey Grade School, this school right here, some administration teachers, a collaborative decision-making team type of leadership approach. We're going through this book right now. We did some work in the first two chapters, building a professional learning community at work. A guide to the first year. We're a little bit further than the first year, but what's nice about this is it's not so philosophical. It's very much has has the research in there, but it's embedded in a way that I think is interesting and is accessible to more individuals. And so the team leaders are gonna be working with this. They can utilize that in their own teams at the schools. I'll be going around and working with several different groups throughout the course of the year. Based upon this, every team leader, I got a book for every single one of them so that we have some continuity from pre-K all the way through twelve with how we're doing our our work. There were some really neat conversations today. Very excited about working with this group throughout the rest of the year and in the years to come.
You've been busy.
It's been a bit, it's been a busy, busy week and a and a half or so. Yeah, pretty busy. But but fun. A lot of, that's a better word. Yeah.
Other questions for Ruben, any of this?
Not a question, but a comment that the state of the district was a lot of fun. Nothing for Charlie alive.
Yeah, you guys had some fun. You guys had some phenomenal questions there. Nice, nice.
It was, but it was celebratory. Like I'm used to that kind of event happening with the principals being able to talk in the different department that's talking deliberative session where it's about high need and stress. And you really get a sense of this is where the money has to go and this, this wasn't what it was about. It really was a celebratory. Here's what we've done, you know, and and this is what we're really proud of and these are areas we're still struggling in and and I and just that mantra going through the whole thing of praising the staff. I loved that. Just like every opportunity was just honestly, look at how these people are rising up and look at how, look at what a community we have. And it was, it really was, it's from lots of different people. It's well worth listening to. It's, it was pretty cool.
Nice, thank you.
There are a lot of people doing a lot of great work.
It was good to hear from the principals and they answered very smooth and asked questions on other people's answers.
Well, I think the question was, okay, in layman's terms, and I'm like, all right, so this is someone else's. But no, it was, it was good. They they just did a great job and I'm very proud of all of them.
Nice. All right. Thank you, Ruben, for that report and that brings us to our consent agenda.
I'd like to make a motion that we remove the minutes from last week's meeting from the consent agenda.
Okay. Thank you, Paul.
Second.
Got a second? Okay. Thank you.
Did the second on that?
I think Christine could get it right. Yeah.
To approve the consent agenda as a nominee.
Okay.
I'll second that.
And Lisa will second that. All all those in favor? All right. Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay, very good, thank you. That carries uh uh six zero, and then what, let's uh address the minutes.
I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes from November seventh, public and non-public.
Thank you, Lisa.
I second the motion.
Thank you, Daisy. All, all those in favor of accepting the minutes from November seventh? Signify by saying aye.
Hang on, we have a question.
Oh, yes.
For the consent agenda. Right? Oh, yeah, I guess we do, because he even has to abstain in, in one of those votes. So, yeah, yeah, we do have to have a roll call because we have a board member who's online.
Okay, so we need a roll call for the consent agenda then. So we go back and do that?
Yeah, yeah, we need to do that for the minutes. No, that was good.
So, so we've already got a uh a motion and a second. So, uh Daisy?
I.
Christine?
Yes.
Hi, Charlie.
Hi.
Lisa. Uh, Paul?
Aye.
And I vote aye also. Okay. And that, now let's go on to the uh minutes for the November seventh. So again, we'll do a roll call.
I.
Daisy, aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
All right, and Paul?
Abstain.
Okay, thank you, Paul, and I vote aye. So that will be five zero one. All right, very good. And um that's going to bring us to action item number seven, the Durant Fund request for thirty-nine thousand dollars.
So this request is from Principal David Dustin, uh the Grant Fund. Uh, the, the money that can be spent from the Grant Fund is only the interest, that's what's allowed. Um, there's approximately thirty-nine thousand in there. We wouldn't be asking for anything more than what is permitted. Uh, we've checked with Carrie, the business administrator, on that to find out the exact amounts. And so uh what the high school would like to do is they would like to take one of the classrooms that's not as usable as it could be and turn it into a more usable um versatile classroom, and so that's what you see from uh those first two underlined areas right there. Uh, so it's gonna take a little work, pulling out some of those stations, some of those stations were former science stations, and so they have you know, water hookups and things of that nature. Um, and then the eight thousand there at the end is really hmm, I guess the best way to put it would be if you recall some of the graphics that we had, either if you were at the state of the district conversation, or you look through the uh, the multi-year plan, we have a graphic that talks about not a hierarchical structure of leadership, but rather a uh collaborative kind of innovation ecosystem model and what that looks like. And so I think what I understand this to be, and trying to get information about this, is that the administration here has asked students to do something of a similar nature, get into a team, start to um figure out what is exactly they want to do to either yeah, I guess you could say leave their mark on the school in a positive way, but to improve the school. And so this group of individuals came back with a ton of ideas, a lot of them are cosmetic in nature, not terribly expensive, but how could possibly have uh a big impact on, on the culture and the, and the climate of the organization. And so they're very excited, they're still working on making some of those decisions, and the administration wants to be able to provide them the resources, like the middle of that model is, is about the resources, provide the resources to those learners to be able to create. And so that's what that is about. If you wanna know a little bit more, um Mr. Dustin might be online, is he? Okay, so I wasn't sure if he was, but he might be able to say a little bit more.
I'd love to know where the estimates came from for the classroom conversion. It seems like quite a project, um so I guess I'd like to
Sure.
know where those estimates came from.
David, would you like to fill it in?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, so um the estimates for that were done. I had um asked John Leclerc to get some estimates for the both, both the gas conversion and the electric conversion, as well as um per square foot tile to put underneath those. So those estimates are actual estimates that came from the companies, um local companies that would do that work. And the classroom furniture is the replace, it's, it'd be buying the items that we purchased for a couple of other classrooms, so we already have the per item cost for those that we verified again this year. So all of the estimates are current as of now. Um, we also built in a little bit more, knowing that the work likely wouldn't happen till the spring, so maybe about, you know, five percent higher than what John had returned.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
David, since you're, since you're, since you're on here, um I gave a little bit of an under, a little bit of a summary of the student-led school improvement projects. Did you wanna add anything or correct anything that I had said?
No, I mean, the committee that we're forming is tentatively called the WOW Committee, but we're not a huge fan of that name, so we are looking at some other options. We had ten seniors turn up to the first meeting, and each is bringing a, a freshman sophomore or junior to the second meeting, and they have a litany of ideas that they would like to start with. Um, the, the estimate for that, the tot, the estimated cost is very estimated, but we're anticipating with the projects they do that that will at least give them a really good start on some of the areas they were looking at, which is bathrooms to start off with, and then some interior and exterior murals that they wanted to design, um as well as possibly some improvements in the calf. So they had, they already came to this first meeting with a, a whole bunch of energy and ideas, and we're just hoping to be able to keep supporting that work for them.
So looking at um curriculum and enrollment, looking out past five years, uh do we have sufficient lab facilities to support that?
So the, the space that we're looking to convert was, at one point in time, appears to have been hastily turned into a science lab. It's never been appropriate for that purpose, um even when it was used for science classroom, which it hasn't been for several years now. There's no instructional space in the room, and the lab benches are kind of unwieldy for any, any project work. So the, the classroom has had a really hard time finding usefulness. It's gone from being a science classroom to the intensive learning center. We tried English classrooms in there. Um, with the current configuration, it's just really not appropriate for any type of learning that we've been trying to do. So we still have four very good, high-quality labs in the high school beyond this one. This was the fifth one that just has not, I guess, had been really appropriate for the purpose. So even if our enrollment bounces back and we end up needing to add additional science classes with the four labs that we have in the high school, we should be very well equipped to support that.
Good, thank you, David.
Um, you're welcome.
Just uh the question of the classroom furniture. I, I know that we heard today that we do have some furniture in storage. Is it reasonable to assume that you've uh reviewed that furniture and that it's not appropriate for this purpose?
Yeah, that furniture is more like a collection of random chairs that we have, some old computer tables, um smaller classroom furniture from the elementary schools and things like that. Um, so what I'd be hoping to do, there's, as you notice, two areas with furniture in here. One would be to equip this room that currently has the four lab islands with actual classroom furniture. The second would allow us to pull out my request for replacing another set of furniture and instead doing it with this um Durant Fund, so that would accomplish the high school furniture requests um without having to go through the budget.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
And David, um, I do remember in the meeting today, John had mentioned that those four islands could possibly contain asbestos because they've been there for so long. So would that completely destroy this quote?
Yeah, if they do have asbestos, then that, what that would do is essentially increase the per square footage cost for the floors. And in that case, I would scrap the furniture replacement in this and um use the additional nine thousand dollars to cover that gap in the tiling.
Okay, thank you for that question, Paul. Yeah. There's always the unknowns out there. Does anybody else have any questions relating to this Durant Fund request? Okay, well, thank you, David, then, for that additional information. And uh still we have a motion. Would anybody like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Conant High School's request to access the Durant Fund for the purposes of facilities.
Okay.
To not exceed thirty-nine thousand dollars.
Thank you, Christine.
I second the motion.
Daisy seconds, okay, thank you, Daisy. Ready? Any discussion? No? Okay, and then let's uh, let's do a roll call, basically.
I.
Christine?
I.
Charlie?
Hi.
Lisa?
Yes.
Paul?
Aye.
Okay, and I vote ayes. Very, very good. And uh now we're on to a lengthy discussion about policy approval, no, not sorry, Lisa, I couldn't help but uh
This deserves razzing, that's okay. All right, Nick, would you please put up the email that I just sent you? The, the policy correction. So the one that we're really gonna be talking about tonight is the first one. This is for the second reading of JFAB, the Admission and Tuition of K to twelve non-resident learners. In the link in the agenda is the previous one that we had discussed last meeting. And we made some changes. So could you scroll down, please, Nick, to the highlighted yellow? Okay, so what we changed it to in your agenda, if you click the link, it still says New Hampshire residents are required slash encouraged to seek state aid. Remember, we talked about this to decide which language we wanted, and we chose for this particular one, we chose encouraged. And then if you scroll down, please, Nick, to the next highlighted one. For the uh non-resident learners of district employees, we chose required. So this was what we had discussed last time. So this is a second reading of that, so I wanted you to kind of see that. It's different from what's in the agenda. Um so uh I would ask for um approval of that today and approval of the next policy, the JFABD Education of Homeless Children and Unaccompanied Youth. Today is our second reading, and I would request approval of that. Um that is one that we did not edit, that came directly from the New Hampshire School Board Association is required, and they um put their lawyers to it, and it looks good to the policy committee, and so it looks good to you all. I'd like those to approve. Then Nick, would you mind going back to the agenda items?
Lisa, should we uh maybe discuss those first two and?
Sure.
Done them?
Yeah, that's a great idea.
No. This is the other. Well, I'll make a motion, not one at a time, I'm work. Let's sort of one at a time. Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve JFAB submitted.
I'll second that.
Good, thanks, Charlie, and thank you, Christine. There any comments or questions about that? So I guess the only thing I would say is uh in terms of the one we're approving is the one we've just seen, not the one that's on the agenda. So we, we want to modify the agenda so that you know, going back in the future, we wanna see what we approved. You know, we know we're looking at the right one.
Yeah, that can be easily done.
Okay, just one of those little details, doesn't take me much to get confused. I can have more. Okay, thank you. Okay, so um if there are no other questions, let's go to a roll, a roll call vote. So we'll start with Lisa.
I.
And Charlie.
Hi.
Christine.
I.
And Daisy.
I.
Paul?
Aye.
Okay, uh, well, and I vote aye also. Thank, thank you, everybody. So. Okay, so I'll make a motion, we approve policy JFABD as.
I second the motion.
Okay, thank you, Charlie, and thank you, Daisy. Are there any questions or, or discussion? Okay, then now Daisy?
I.
Christine?
I.
Charlie?
Hi.
Lisa?
I.
And Paul?
Aye.
Hey, and I vote aye also. So that also passes six zero zero. Great. Well, then Lisa, back to you for the first reading.
Yep. So what each of these policies links to is the School Board Association updates to policies that we have last reviewed between two thousand and five and two thousand sixteen. Most of them were two thousand and five. Um, so these are the ones that we, as a policy committee, sat down and said the language that the School Board Association has given is appropriate for us. And so if you look at our website policies, the school that you'll see a the old policy. And I would ask you to look at that this week or next week, and then compare it to, you know, these policies that are in the agenda. Um, it's a lot of reading. They are, well, we're spending time in, we've been working on that. They all have to do with health, and um they have been woefully outdated. You know, we just haven't had the detail that the School Board Association has been working hard to get um quality information on. These are nearly all required. Um if some of them might be at the recommended status, but they are ones that we do want to have. Um, the one that you wanna pay attention to at the bottom, EBBC is a removal because it is um completely written into the JCLB, the Immunization of Students. So that, the reason that's being removed, and as you read through, you'll see, uh it might be the GLC. As you read through, you'll see, oh, yeah, it, it, the School Board Association recommends using one or the other. We're gonna get rid of the EBBC. It's just wasn't there. So it's simply that it's redundant. There's nothing wrong with it, it's just redundant. Um the bottom one, JLCC Communicable Diseases, that is simply us looking at it and updating the date. We've chosen in that case to keep our school districts policy that was written a while back. Um, it fit our community better than what the School Board Association did, so we spent some time on that and decided, no, we're gonna keep this one.
Which one was that, Lisa?
The very last one that says School Board Review.
Yep.
Yeah, so that's the one that we're simply gonna ask you to look at, and if you approve it, that will simply update the date on it to it being reviewed for twenty twenty-two. Okay?
Hey, well, thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Questions, additional comments? Uh, yes.
Yeah, just procedurally speaking, so I make sure that I understand for updating purposes, um the way that it, we've done school board review in the past is that it's on the agenda as a courtesy to the board, and then we just move on and update the date. So I'm correct in assuming that I can just pull this off. It doesn't go on any future agenda. You guys aren't gonna vote on it. I'll just update the date, say that it's been reviewed as of today's date, and then that one's done, correct? Oh, oh, I'm not sure if I understood that. So in policies in which we aren't actually changing anything, we want, yeah, we wanna make sure that we're having a better mind as to say, we didn't until a couple of years ago, we didn't actually log in any way that the policy committee looked at a co, uh, policy and said, okay, we're okay with this as is. So you might have a policy that was last updated in two thousand and five, but it's been looked at in, you know, twenty eighteen, or, you know, twenty sixteen, but it was never actually officially logged. So what we're doing is we're not changing the date it was approved. We're just adding an additional date underneath that's saying, in addition to it being approved in, say, two thousand and five, it's also been reviewed as of twenty twenty-two. So that the, so that future iterations of the policy committee don't feel that they have to review these things that have been recently reviewed.
Makes perfect sense.
So I'm just saying that procedurally, so I understand this, this one goes off after tonight, because there's no changes. I'll update the date, and then we're good to go. I just wanna make sure that you guys weren't expecting it to come back for any sort of official vote or anything of that nature.
So I guess my thinking would be, would come back, so we say, yes, we have reviewed it. You know, assuming that some of us will need this, this two-week period just to do what Lisa's asked, but we wouldn't vote on it because it's already proven in two thousand and five.
So, does that make sense? And are we okay with the effective date being today as the review date? Because I can't, I, I wanna just make sure that we're officially timestamping these in an appropriate manner.
Uh, I would wait until the next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we're not gonna. Uh I would wait until the next meeting, yeah, we, we're not gonna add any additional policies. So the next meeting, we'll keep it to all these with the second reading. Um so that makes good sense to me to give everybody time to review all of them and.
Yeah, and I'm just making sure that I understand appropriately, because that, this represents a slight change in how things have been done. So I just want to make sure I'm aware of that change, so that we can make sure that it appears on the next agenda and that it's logged with the next date, not today, and then we're done.
Good, thank you. And thank you, Lisa. So uh. If there are no other questions about these that are here from the first reading. Review them and be ready on the fifth of December. Dress them, okay, great, well, thank you. And uh that. Brings us to board committee updates, although. Seems kind of early in the evening to unfortunately update this, okay, let's, let's keep going.
Don't you jinx that?
They, all right, so um. Any committees that have met since our last meeting? Oh, I guess we should. Get updates from.
Finance has had uh several budget reviews. C H S all from all of the schools and facilities in the S A U. We have a reunion with uh special ed. And at some point in time, we have to have a non-meeting to. Help people who've never been to a line item budget before to understand what the. Terms are and what they mean. And other than that, that's it.
Okay, well, thank you Charlie, anybody have any questions about that? Or comments? Yes.
I wasn't able to make it um to that meeting, I got held up with something else, um. Is there? A file or can we set up something else so that I?
We, we did not address the uh budget line items. Fields and so forth, all right, at the last meeting, we talked mostly about.
Okay.
Yeah, so we still have time and I, I think it would be most important that we make sure. That those who are not on the finance committee or have been on the past have an opportunity to be there. So we'll try to uh, we'll try to set that up.
Best thing is is to have that just before you get.
Yeah.
Set a budget so that you know what you're looking in.
Charlie, there's one thing that uh I noticed in the, in the minutes when we talked about maybe having some of the. Um budget areas that are already been reviewed, having some of those. Uh pieces of the budget available. And uh I don't know how feasible that is, I know it's a lot of work to put those together.
No, Carrie's got it all on a spreadsheet, you can send out the spreadsheet, another piece that's missing is the special education.
That just went out tonight.
I'm sorry?
I said that's in your box right now.
Okay.
The special education pieces, okay?
That was the last, last of the groups, yeah.
Okay, so then um. I don't know how much it does help to have these other, you know, to the rest of the board. The, the bunch of documents for the high school and the grade schools. Carrie has them ready, but they haven't been shared yet, is that right? Or have they?
They've been shared with everybody on a finance. Just haven't gone to the rest of the board.
Right.
We can send out the rest of the board anytime they want.
Yeah, okay.
Be a good time to, to get them before, you know, to get them in hand if we go to a. Non-meeting so that they can.
Yeah.
Say, I don't understand this, I don't.
Yeah, so people have a chance to take a look at them and see what the. Question, but okay.
See, you can ask Carrie to send to the rest of the board number. Not problem.
Those pieces have been approved, okay.
They haven't been approved.
They haven't, no, these are, these are first drafts, round, yeah, exactly, I mean, I can buy, I mean, I have all the emails.
But I think that the, the real discussion is going to come down to. Only set a number.
Right. Yeah, just uh one comment that so. I've observed some of these review processes, that's very impressive. Thank you for all the hard work and the thoroughness with which you've been doing that. Okay, um. Uh facilities met today and uh. We spent quite a bit of time talking about our uh H V A C project. Uh it's. We're kind of a critical stage in that we've completed much of the physical work. Uh the installation of uh. Uh the ductwork in particular and the changes to the system. One of the points that uh that Ruben reminded us of is that. We're putting units on top of all these buildings that are gonna increase efficiency, make our buildings more valuable. Those units have an expected lifespan. That uh they say fifteen years, they oftentimes last quite a bit longer than that. However, the ductwork and the electrical upgrades that have been done really can benefit these schools long beyond that. These are not short-term improvements, they're, you know, kind of major upgrades to the uh infrastructure. Um this is also a critical time, because now that so much of the uh ductwork and. The placement of the units has been done. Uh there still is physical work to be done, removal of uh unit ventilators and closing in of the wall spaces that that. Will leave open and so forth, but still, a, a major portion of the work's been done, but now the controls and the systems. And the software remains to be done. And so there's a lot of very important work and. I think our uh consultant or clerk of the works, Steve Horton. Pointed out that this is, you know, a bit more stressful, can even be aggravating while you're trying to. Adapt an old building to these new systems. You take a plan that makes perfect sense, but now you have to actually get the physical locations. Uh operating as the design intended.
Fortunately for this building, we've got a lot of space up there, so it hasn't been difficult to put the ductwork in. Uh I mean, I'm sure it's difficult to put in, but I mean, compared to, I think what. Was more difficult at the elementary schools.
Right, right. Okay, very good, and then, you know, the, it, we went through. Many of the items that have been on the facilities uh agendas list for a long time. You know, there are staffing shortages that are just kind of an ongoing problem. That links in a little bit to you work with the. Board is doing with the J R S S A. Uh. Lot of small projects that, that need to get done and uh. But, you know, that, it seems like the facilities group is doing. Good work, making a lot of progress and uh the big item really was. You know, looking at the budget and how we can come up with a budget that is, is responsive to taxpayers, but also takes care of our schools and uh. And how we can. Build community support and, and, and education. Okay, what other committees do we have that have met in the last two weeks? Policy, obviously.
Yep, policy net, we're slugging through the J stuff.
There are a lot of policies, aren't there?
There are and, and it, and, and I like to see us moving forward with it. I feel like a lot of times we, we kind of tread water because we're reviewing ones that we've reviewed recently and that, that can, that can get tiring. I mean, but it's also really powerful, so, you know, that's, you know, to be able to fine tune things to, to really make this effective and effectual is, is exciting, so.
Plus our, many care person, very good delegator.
Is that so?
Absolutely.
I have to be uh conscious of that and avoid getting any of those. Just, just kidding, very good.
We changed up how the meeting went last time, I really enjoyed it personally, but.
Okay.
And hence we have this.
And I have homework. I got homework to do.
All right, so um. I think that that perhaps brings us to the end of our uh. Committee updates. For the moment. So that means we're at public comments too.
All right, so uh I think everybody who was here before is still here, I don't think we have too many new people, but just in case. Policy should be up on the screen for those remote, um if you want to make a public comment, make sure you're familiar with that policy. Um use the hand raise feature at the bottom of the screen, that alerts me that you'd like to speak. If you could just use your first name, last name and town of residence before making a comment, that would be greatly appreciated.
And so, do we have anybody, uh Nick, who is uh interested in making a public comment?
I do not see anybody.
Okay. What about uh board matters, does anybody have a board matter that they would like to raise? Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
So on the budget development calendar. We. Are scheduled to have a budget finalization meeting on December tenth, it's a Saturday. That is also the same Saturday that the Pratt and Cafeteria are hosting the. Vendor Craft Fair. Um I've been to the Craft Fair before and the parking is scarce. And we're having a budget finalization the same time?
Maybe.
Okay.
If, that's a, if needed, we don't always, I think one year we didn't have to do it, that time we had done it before, ahead of time.
Okay.
And it could be a part, part day, doesn't have to be a whole day, um it's there if we need it.
Okay.
But we don't usually have a very large crowd here either, so it's just. Yeah.
We'll have the reps of both.
Both towns.
And they may have some. Question.
Sure, yeah.
Can we meet in Ridge? I mean, why don't we just meet in Ridge?
Could we get?
We've got a large parking lot now to handle the seven of us, I think.
We have, we have the dirt ones down there too.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, but if we need to go to Saturday, then.
Yeah.
Could I ask that we just take a look at the budget calendar real quick, is it, could we put that up on the? On the screen and just take a look at the timings of things? And, because you had mentioned you want to add in with a, a very important non-meeting for just us to. Have some education, which, boy, that's a good idea, um so let's, but if you wouldn't mind just putting up the. So the fifth is our regularly scheduled school board meeting? Correct?
Right.
Okay, so do we need to change our non-public that day to five thirty or?
Yes, it's gonna be challenging to get this non-public in the training. Because uh I think it does take a little time, but if you can't, it's not something you want to try and do.
If we're gonna get out the spreadsheet. You know, like tomorrow, Carrie's gonna send it out tomorrow. Uh then you're gonna start looking at it tomorrow, so as soon after that as we can have a non-meeting that works. So I wouldn't want to wait and try to do it on the fifth, because you're gonna be asked to make some decisions on the fifth.
So if we could do it in that week of the twenty eighth, would be ideal. So again, you know, Paul and Christine obviously have been very involved and. Have had multiple chances to look, we'd like to have you involved here too, but Daisy and Lisa.
And.
We could start with you in terms of what does that week look like and what would be a day with?
Yeah, we'd really.
Uh I can make that one sit work without problem, um.
So that also work for you, Lisa?
It does after um we have the J R S A at four thirty, so six thirty. Um six, you know, six thirty would work perfectly for me on Wednesday.
Okay. Charlie, what do you think about the, who, who needs to be involved in doing that training? Do we need to have power for that, or is that something that uh that we can do as a board?
I think that Carrie should. She has the ability to answer any question.
Right.
We try to do it internally. I can't answer any questions, I, I have more questions I have answered.
Well, I, I, I agree with you, but uh, but yeah. So Ruben, what do you think, I mean, four thirty is probably not an ideal time for.
It wouldn't be four thirty from my, my understanding, four thirty to six thirty on Wednesday, right, the thirtieth? That would be, we're here for negotiations for four thirty to six thirty, and then after that, so six thirty is when we'd have time to be able to do that. There's a couple of different avenues we could take, we could do that, we could have. Um individuals who want more personal attention can set up meetings with myself and Carrie. During like the day as well, you know, on Monday or Tuesday or sometime Wednesday, probably not, is, I don't know. Before negotiation times, we, we crunch pretty hard, so um that's a tough day, but, but in the evening as well, that's. You want to do it as a group, that's perfectly fine, and we'll be here.
Could you do like six thirty on that Wednesday? Lisa, what about you?
Yes. And just bring extra snacks to the J R S S A. Well, the non-meeting's just us, we can make it a dinner meeting pretty quickly.
Yeah, there you go.
Oh yeah, that's true. So I have one other thing, um just to throw this in. I made the ne- mistake of saying I have not, that I had never been called for jury duty recently, two weeks ago. And I got called for jury duty today and I have to be there on January ninth. It is amazing how that happened so quickly, should never have said it. I don't know whether where that's gonna go, but I just want to put that out there.
Is that Alexa?
I was by the library, I don't think there was no Alexa around. Pretty remarkable.
Voice into the Google Assistant.
So I, I don't, I don't know what could happen in terms of budget meetings and any of that.
No, I think that as a public official, you could probably get them to modify any kind of a. I mean, I, I seriously think that your participation in this kind of a.
It's not a, a reason, it's not a reason to be excused.
No.
Now I love.
Well, that, that meeting day is on the calendar, it's just a normal uh board meeting, so it would necessarily be a budget discussion specifically.
I'm sure it'd be back for that, especially that first day.
Very interesting. All right, anybody has any future items?
Next, C T E documents for, to approve that, so I'll have Nick put that on, I think he sent it out the, um, two weeks ago. He didn't put it on this one, we'll make sure it's on the next board meeting.
Okay. That's the request for the modification of the document.
Modification to, yeah, yeah, yeah. And then we should have some regular conversations about. Um the future of, of C T E and. And what our involvement is, yeah, with the uh building projects and so forth.
Now, we have, um, you know, we have the athletics. Community meetings and the elementary ed commu- community meetings. Is there any reason to have a C T E community meeting to talk about what it is we should be involved in?
Yeah, I definitely think so, I think we need a little more information, um I know that. Yeah, I definitely think so. I think we need a little more information. I know that. The, some members of the high school administration went to. I want to say it's, it's Rochester, but it may not have been Rochester. It was a school that had recently had a renovation done. And so to kind of tour around their facilities, talk to their C T E director and, and get some ideas. There has been some conversation about not just the building trades, but also do we want to look at culinary arts or. You know, another program or something like that as well, that maybe we don't currently offer in our region. And so. Those are conversations that we'd have to have. Certainly anytime you add something, that's certainly benefiting your kids, but it's also adding. A dollar amount to any kind of construction project. That being said, also the general rule of thumb is that. The state reimburses seventy five cents on a dollar for this type of. Construction project.
So there is a cost that over twenty five percent.
There is a cost, absolutely, yeah.
And my, my sense is that the timing is such that it would not be this March that that.
It would not be, no, no, no. But we would, we will have to, you know, by this March, start to make sure that we're getting some designs in place.
Okay, very good. Time to pay attention to that one and be sure. Okay. Charlie has made a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Charlie. We have a second. Very good.
Roll call?
Roll call. Paul, we have a motion to adjourn.
Hi.
Thank you, Lisa.
Hi.
Charlie. Christine.
Hi.
Daisy.
Hi.
And I say hi. And we are adjourned.